At the break of dawn and it's on again, better get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man. Shake the dust off the food. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, boy, here's your opportunity for turning a page. Today's a new chapter. Write it down. Make it end with the wind. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like alert in the light, hit the dirt from your eyes and work for the world. It is done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man. That will hit snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick, let's go. Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going. Don't make the delay. So bring me along and lift your arm high. Like Georgia, we'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step. You'll get in it in the sack. Get it in like you never did it when you overslept. So right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Vincent Martin, Associate Minister of Wilson Chapel Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Hunter Williams, if he joins us. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Thank you for all of the things that you have done. Oh God, we prayed this morning according to your word. You said that we acknowledge you, that you would give us directions, oh God, so we acknowledge your presence right now. Touch each and every member that is here. Touch each and every council person that is here and every neighborhood that has represented the Lord. Touch the mayor as he continue to lead this city, oh God. We pray that they will make God's decision. Lord, saturate this room with your love and your spirit. Give them that mind that they're gonna need to work together. In your son, Jesus' name, we do pray. Amen.
Salute and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have a roll call?
Good morning, Mr. President. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, our minutes are not ready from the July second, twenty twenty-four through August sixth, twenty twenty-four meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office. Chief Sparks.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madame Protem. To the members of the council and good morning to all of the members of the public, everyone under the sound of my voice. I have a few notes on the mayor's behalf and then one presentation, Mr. President. First, the city of Birmingham is offering free recycling carts for residents. Birmingham residents can register to receive one of fifty-one hundred new sixty-four gallon recycling carts while supplies last. You can feel free to get more information and sign up online at www.birminghamal.gov/ recycle. Again, we're encouraging everyone, please take advantage of this opportunity. The Lead Early Birmingham effort is looking for individuals with a passion for the city of Birmingham who are ready to learn advocacy and community leadership skills to make our city a destination for starting and raising a family. Applications are open now until August the thirtieth. And for more information, feel free to call our Department of Youth Services. The number is two zero five three two zero zero eight seven nine. It's that time, everybody, for ACE, the Academy of Civic Engagement. Where ACE, as we commonly refer to it, will kick off on Thursday, September the fifth, at five thirty P M at the Boutwell Auditorium. For those who have not heard, ACE is a citywide leadership initiative aimed at bringing everyday residents together for a deeper understanding of how the city is working for them and how they can plug into a variety of opportunities. To apply, go to www.birminghamal.gov/ace. The city of Birmingham is also seeking proposals for its twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Building Opportunities for Lasting Development, or our BOLD funding program. Established in twenty eighteen, BOLD provides financial support to organizations dedicated to advancing economic development within the city through initiatives focused on five key focus areas: small businesses, workforce development, eliminating barriers, creative placemaking, and high-growth industries. For more info on BOLD, everyone can visit www.birminghamal.gov/bold for additional info. Strong Her is back. Saturday, August the thirty-first is the deadline to submit nominations for this this quarter's Strong Her campaign. Strong Her highlights women who live, work, volunteer, or attend school in the Magic City and are working to make a difference. Honorrees will be announced in March twenty twenty-five on the city's social media pages as a part of Women's History Month. For more information, go to www.birminghamal.gov/strongher. And then finally, Mr. President, Madame Protem, members of the council. At this time, I would like to invite Coach Orlando Burks and all of the young men of the Steel City Gators and Ballin' Fast basketball teams, as well as all of the other coaches and any supporters, if they would, please join me here at the podium. Come on down. Sorry. As they come down, just a little bit of background. These dynamic young men participated and placed in the Youth Basketball of America National Championship in Orlando, Florida, in July of twenty twenty-four. The Steel City Gators, who practice at the MLK Rec Center and Hays K through eight school in District Five, Councilor O'Quinn, are the seventh-grade national champions. And they're led by Coaches Ike and EJ. Coach Ike. Coach EJ, Ray J? The fifth-grade team for the Steel City Gators are the runners-up for their division. They're led by Coach Booby and Coach Lake. And the Ballin' Fast team, who practice in Wylem in District Nine, Council Tate, are the third-grade runners-up. They're led by Coaches Blue Franklin and Quinn Lundey. Coaches? I don't see you. All right. On behalf of the mayor and the city of Birmingham, we certainly want to offer you all a hearty congratulations because you all repped our city well. Let's give it up for these dynamic young people. So we'll bring Coach Burks up and he'll have a few words on behalf of everyone. Coach.
How y'all doing? First of all, it's an honor to be here and it's exciting for these young men right here. They are all from the City of Birmingham Products, Birmingham City Schools. I think we got about five. How many of you guys go to Phillips? Raise your hands up. All of them, eight students this way of Princeton. Got some from Princeton? I hear. So we all, all these kids out of the city of Birmingham, we just want to let everybody know that we got some kids doing positive things in this, in the city. And everybody's not getting in trouble. And they're doing things. We keeping them busy year-round. So we always trying to find year-round programs to keep them in our gyms. Coach Dorsey, you got a gym in Wylem, and kids go there and train. We're at the Martha King Recreation Center in Avondale. And all these guys are in there daily. And then I want to give a big hand to my coaches, because they don't get paid for this. And they dedicate a lot of time with these young men to get them to that level, because these kids are from Birmingham, Alabama, known as a football state, a football city. And they went to Orlando, Florida, and they beat teams from Louisiana, Texas, California, and everywhere. So we can play basketball here, but it starts right here. I thank you, the city council, for giving us a platform in our rec centers to do these type of things for these young men, because without the doors being open, they don't have anywhere to go. They don't go to YMCs anymore. They come to rec centers now. So all these kids are constantly at MLK Rec, working on their crafts, and we thank you guys.
Thank you, Coach. And councils, I know the council's pleasure is typically to hear the young men, their names, and the grades that they're in. So, coaches, if we could, let's get them ready. And each young man, come up, give your name and your grade. All right, come on with it.
Good morning. My name is Taj Moore. I'm in the sixth grade. And that's.
What position do you play?
I play center.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Chase Prince. I'm in the sixth grade. And I play power forward.
Good morning. My name is Bradley Leonard. And I'm in sixth grade, and I play point guard.
Good morning. My name is Jonas Harris, and I'm in the fifth grade, and I play point guard.
My name is Mara Diedrich. I'm in the fourth grade. I play shooting guard.
My name is Mara Henkel. I'm in the fourth grade. I play power forward and center.
My name is Langston Lundey, and I play power forward.
My name is A.J. Horn, and I play shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Elijah Giles. I'm in the eighth grade, and I play point guard.
Good morning. My name is Omar Forstner, and I'm in the eighth grade, and I go to Phillips Academy.
Good morning. My name is Taylan Johnson. I play guard and go to Tanger Hospital.
My name is Justin Merchant, and I go to Phillips Academy, and I play point guard.
My name is Ajay Smoof. I go to Bragg, and I play guard.
Good morning. My name is Kingston Reed. I'm in the eighth grade. I go to Phillips Academy, and I play shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Cannon Combs. I play center, and I go to Bragg Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. President, council. That's everyone.
Chief Sparks, I'd like one of these gentlemen to explain why they have two championship rings.
So I'm pretty sure after one of our coaches had left, we had went to the ball. I don't know, I don't know what the tournament name was. And we won the first ring. And then the second, the championship, the tournament after that, we won this ring. And then we won a medal in first place. So we got three first-place rings and then, well, two first-place rings and one first-place medal. And then we went to Atlanta and got runner-up. And then we just went to Nationals and got runner-up, so.
That's how we do is win, Council President.
That's right. Councilmore.
No, first off, I just wanted to say congratulations to you all for the hard work that you all do. I see a lot of familiar faces amongst the coaches. I know, you know, Coach Burks, man, like, you keep that gym open more than Walmart stay open, man. Like, there's always some programming that's going on in there, which is a good thing, because we see the results of it. And so I just wanted to tell you, thank you for, you know, what you're doing over there. I hate that you're not in District Four no more, but, you know, it's all good, because we're still able to benefit from it. And so thank you all, all the coaches, for what you do and how you pour into these young men and are positive examples for them. And I'm just curious, my brother, how tall are you? Six-seven, and you in the what grade? He in the what grade? My Lord. Okay. I'm here business, sir.
Council Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate all you young men. Keep shining. I mean, y'all are doing some great things. And for the coaches, the sacrifices that you have, are making and your families awarding you to make that sacrifice, pouring to our young people. So again, congratulations. You are doing some great things. Birmingham was talked about a lot when I was in D.C. yesterday, so people are paying attention to Birmingham and particularly, you know, young people. So keep shining. I see Taj out there, Uche Bean's son, Mr. Moore. So who's the coach for Wylem? Who's the Wylem coach? Okay. If you could, just reach out to my office, because I want to support y'all as much as I can support y'all, okay? But again, congratulations and to all of those that went to Phillips Academy. Phillips is my old high school.
All right, thank you. Councilman Smithman.
Well, I just want to say congratulations. I did play basketball growing up, and that was some of the best summers ever. I still am really good friends with the people I played summer ball with, but this is no small accomplishment. You're gonna have these trophies forever. I still have trophies from one you won, first, second, third place. I want to really say I'm proud of you all. Coaches, I want to say thank you for what you do. I am a coach's daughter, just like Madame Protem. And, you know, you've all sacrificed so much, like what Coach was saying. You don't have to do it, but you never know the impact that you have in these boys' lives. We have plenty of men who still come up to my dad today, who are DAs and lawyers and coaches themselves and say, hey, thank you, Coach Smithman, for what you've done. So you guys are the reason that we're able to keep our youth in line. So thank you for that. And if there's anything we can do to help Park and Red, even Chief, whatever we can do to help you all, then thank you.
Council Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, wanted to thank the coaches for all you do and pouring into these young men. And all the young men, I think, and that's why I love team sports, because, I mean, you get, you got teamwork. You got overcoming adversity. You got, you can see the work you put in translate into success. And so that doesn't change. As you get older, no matter what you're doing, or what you're trying to accomplish, putting in the work, being disciplined, overcoming adversity is gonna be a staple of that. So keep going, keep growing. We'll be watching you. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, again, congratulations. Want to say, I see you all. I was smiling at the opening of the meeting, because some of these guys seem to be really excited to be on TV. So, yeah. You're on TV. Awesome. Thank you.
That concludes the mayor's report, Mr. President.
We have a question. From Protem Alexander? Okay.
Good morning. I won't delay. I know you want to get out and take your pictures, but Chief, I thank you all. I'm excited about the recycling program that started. But yesterday, in a couple of neighborhood meetings I attended, the residents were asking, they had opted in, but they had not received, will they receive an email confirmation? Or how will they know that their information has been acknowledged and that they're on the list? And you don't have to answer today if you don't know, but the question out there is, they didn't get any type of confirmation, which they were hoping, expecting. So they just want to know, how do they know that they're opting in?
Okay. You were about to say something, Councilman.
We'll provide a follow-up from our office. We'll have Shonda Temple follow back up and explain.
Thank you. And there were some questions about what could go into the bin. And we had a lot of people that had interest who had never recycled before. So there was a question, do the items go in without bags? Or how should they go? Should they be cleaned and separated? So just some questions for those novices out there who don't do it.
We have some F A Qs that'll hopefully answer that. We'll make sure you have it, Council.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Smithman.
And Madame Protem, you know, we have a little recycling book the council made as well, so we'll have to get those printed and give them out to people as well. But I did have a question. That's a good question, because, you know, I had to fill it out for my mama, because she wanted one. And we didn't get email confirmation, but I did see you guys did some type of confirmation after you completed it, though. What is the funding source for the recycling carts? Because at one point, we were told we weren't gonna give out recycling carts. And then we were kind of surprised when we heard about this program. So what's the funding source? Is it three thousand dollars?
No, this is, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I'm right here. No, this was from that A.D.M. grant that we received that the council approved a couple of months ago. So this is a fully funded grant that funded the recycle program.
Oh, wait, that's great. Yeah, that's. Have we considered giving some of our schools some of the recycling carts as well?
I'm not familiar with the grant says, but I think it is first for citizens first.
Do you, well, if y'all, like, can we have a request maybe for our schools, so we can teach our kids that? I think that'd be really good for them to be able to get used to recycling at the schools, like they do at the colleges.
Make sure that we're able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sparks. All right. At this time, I'll read the statement on the conduct of business.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Or Councilmore.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I did have a question as well. This probably could be directed to either Chief Sparks or, okay. So I know there's a project that, you know, some residents over in the Parnell Vista and Penfield Park area are trying to get more clarity and information about. I'm not sure if you got a chance to speak to them at all in the crowd, but one of the things that they wanted to be able to see was some type of rendering for the project. I know it's been quite some time since they've been, you know, working on it. And one of the holdups right now is that we have residents that have not signed to have their property be utilized so that the project can get started. But it's only because they need more clarity around what's actually gonna happen. And so I'm not sure if, you know, they've had an opportunity to speak to anybody from you all's team, but would love for you all to be able to make that happen, though.
Absolutely, Mr. President. So, Councilor, for the residents that are in attendance, if we could, we have team members that are ready to assist them and provide that showing of the rendering. So we'll ask them if they could, just please step right outside, and then we'll make sure that we get that shown to them. So all residents of Parnell who are here, if you can meet us right outside, we have team members that are ready to assist them on that. All right, thank you, Mr. Sir.
Chief Sparks, while we're discussing infrastructure, you're probably aware of this, but I did have a question regarding the viaduct on Messer Airport Highway that continues to flood. Wasn't that long ago that we, the council approved purchase of a pump to keep that situation abated. For whatever reason, over the weekend, the viaduct was flooded, but we didn't get any rain over the weekend. So I was wondering if you could shed any light on what that situation, you know, what's going on there?
Yeah, Chief Mitchell and the team, our Capitol Projects team is leading in. So, Chief.
Yeah, just for a quick update for you, Council, and the public, we temporarily closed Messer Airport, so we can do further investigations on what the potential issue is. So that's why we temporarily closed it again, because we didn't want to prevent people having water rescues at this moment. So we'll investigate. Team has been out there since Saturday, and then we'll provide a report to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing, last thing. So I know over in the Norwood neighborhood, there's a speeding issue. And I know that, you know, speed cushions and traffic calming is something that, you know, a lot of neighborhoods are requesting for, but this particular area happens to be around Norwood Elementary School. And so just wanted to see if there could be some type of preference or priority, you know, put on, you know, that area, because there is several cars that speed through in the Norwood neighborhood, and so.
So, yes, sir, Councilor, we've made the review around, obviously, schools that's been elevated to us a few times. So the review by the Department of Transportation, it's pretty engaged on that space. We'll be providing an update for the council on that.
Gotcha. Yeah, on that issue, Councilmore, just for your information, for the council's information too. So the state, in one of the more recent sessions, has mandated that municipalities throughout the state install speed zones, school zone signage around all schools, public, private, whatever. So that process has been initiated. It's something that the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee has occasionally been getting updates on. But, you know, I know that signage doesn't necessarily slow people down. But I did want to let you know that you should see some changes around some of our schools, eventually all of our schools, with respect to school zone signage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. At this time, Mr. Clerk, could we read through our consent agenda items, please?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda starts on page two with item three. Excuse me. Page three, item four is on consent. Page twenty-six, we pick back up with the consent agenda with items five, six, seven, and eight. On page twenty-seven, we have items nine, ten, eleven, and twelve on consent. Page twenty-eight, we have items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen on consent. Page twenty-nine, items seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty are on consent. Page thirty, items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are on consent. Page thirty-one, items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are on consent. Page thirty-two, items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one are on consent. Page thirty-three, items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven are on consent. Page thirty-four, items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three are on consent. Page thirty-five, items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine are on consent. Page thirty-six, items fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five are on consent. Page thirty-seven, items fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, excuse me, and sixty-one are on consent. Please make the correction on item fifty-eight. That should be sixteen Seventy-First Street North. Sixteen Seventy-First Street North. Page thirty-eight, items sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven are on consent. Page thirty-nine, items sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one are on consent. Page forty, items seventy-two and seventy-three are on consent. And we have three addendums.
All right. This time, do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman Smithman.
Can we add item seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight to consent?
All right. Those are the addendum items. Councilor Clark.
That took care of mine. Thank you.
Council Tate.
Mr. President, can we add item seventy-five to consent, please?
I object to that.
Okay.
And I'd like to take item sixty-seven now.
So item seventy-five on page forty will remain off consent, and the other item is sixty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item sixty-seven on page thirty-eight. Council Clark.
On item number sixty-nine, there needs to be a correction. It's pretty simple. It would just be recommended by the Community Development Committee instead of recommended by Councilor Moore, Chairman. It's item number sixty-nine. He actually didn't make that meeting, so I just wanted the record to be straight, not to call you out.
It's all good.
Okay. All right. We have a couple of, a few items marked as public hearing on the consent agenda. Do any members of the public wish to add or remove, or to remove those items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Do we have a motion on the consent? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I believe they took all number sixty-seven.
Yes.
Sure, okay. If our PO team could help address that issue, yes. So number sixty-seven on page thirty-eight is off of the consent agenda as requested by Counselor Moore. This time, we need a motion.
Move the items.
Second.
Okay. Alexander Smith and Counselors, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, the consent agenda passes. Ms. Clark, first item, please.
All right, goes item one. In order to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand twenty-four dash three, to change zone district boundaries from I three planned manufacturing district to PRD planned recreational district in order to allow for a one hundred and five unit multifamily car condominium development filed by Ray Roll in the city of Birmingham. The owners for the property located at fifty-nine, fifty-five Barber Motorsports Parkway and nine sixty-nine Rex Lake Road is situated in section thirty-six, quarter section three, township sixteen, range two west, and section twenty-six, quarter section one, township seventeen, range one west, and hearing of all interested parties, this is second reading. Motion, please.
Second.
Adam, this is Abbott and Smith. Counselor Abbott, this is a public hearing on him for planning and zoning.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Do we, Ms. Burrell is here to read our case, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Kim Spurrell. I serve as the City Zoning Administrator in the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. The case before you today is ZAC two thousand twenty-four dash three. This is located in the Overton Neighborhood Association. This is an application to change the zoning from I three, which is a planned manufacturing district, to PRD, which is our planned recreational district. The applicant is Ray Roll and the city of Birmingham. The applicant is proposing to construct a new car condominium development adjacent to the Barber Motorsports Speedway. The car condominiums will be customizable and will start at twelve hundred square feet. They plan to construct fifty-one in the first phase and then fifty-four in the second phase. The subject's property is thirty-four point three-three acres, and it is all currently zoned I three planned manufacturing district. Properties to the north, south, and east are also zoned I three. However, property to the west is zoned PRD. The long-range land use plan identifies this property as general commercial and industrial. The applicant submitted a subdivision request to resurvey the property, and that was approved last month by the subdivision committee in case SUB two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen. The applicant will also have to comply with the city's landscape requirements, including trees along street frontage, one tree per eight parking spaces, and the landscape architects will also need a list of all of the species that will be planted on the site. And the city's stormwater team reviewed the rezoning application, and all of the usual stormwater permits will be required, including a pre-concept meeting with the city's stormwater staff. The Birmingham Department of Transportation reviewed this application, and they noted that they would like to see the construction of sidewalks along Innovation Way. In addition, all driveway and sidewalk permits will be required for the development. This property is located in the northeast framework plan area. This framework plan was adopted in two thousand seventeen, and there is an implementation committee, however, they have not been meeting regularly. The applicant presented the rezoning request to the Overton Neighborhood Association on June fourth, and they received unanimous support, six to zero, for the rezoning request. The zoning advisory committee met on June eighteenth, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request to the city council. The planning and zoning committee met on June twenty-sixth, and they also voted unanimously to support this request to the full city council. The applicant is here if you have any specific questions for the developer, and that concludes the city's staff report.
Thank you very much. If the applicant is here, please come forward, applicant or applicant's representative.
Good morning, counsel. My name's Ray Roll, I'm the applicant for the zoning request.
You want to just tell everybody about your concept?
Sure, give me one second, I even got some illustrations. So our concept, as Kim had discussed, was it's a car condominium development located near the World Plaza facility, Barber Motorsports Park. And so our concept is really to bring about car condominiums and what these are. So the car condominiums themselves, what they are really is, it's intended for car enthusiasts. So we've done a couple of these in other markets. And what we see in certain markets is, is we see a community of car collectors. They've got high-end vehicles, they're looking for a place to store them. What we have here is a unique opportunity, an opportunity to bring the car collectors, again, with the car enthusiasts that are already going to Barber Motorsports Park. So what these are, they're condominiums. So they will be for sale product. As Kim mentioned, they start at twelve hundred square feet, but generally what happens is, is we build in about four hundred square feet of mezzanine on top. So we get owners that bring in their cars, and then on the weekends, they like to bring their cars out and show them to everybody that's in the community. Now, for here, again, as I mentioned, we'll have car enthusiasts, and then we'll have people that are associated with the motorsports park that will also come in. So again, it's a community, it's customizable to each individual buyer. But I will take a second to say what it's not, because a lot of times that's what people want to know. What we're not going to allow is, we're not going to allow this to be a garage. You can't bring your car here to get fixed. That's a maintenance shop, that's going to be somewhere else. You're going to have people that are going to do some things on their car, but this is not a maintenance shop. This is not also going to be a place that we're going to allow people to have VRBOs or Airbnbs, because we've got car enthusiasts that are investing large amount of money to put their cars at this facility. What we don't want is a turnover of renters that are going to come in, and we're going to let people behind the security to kind of start to mix in and mingle with the enthusiasts and the people that are collecting cars that are truthfully quite expensive. The other thing we're not going to allow, and we'll control this through the HOA, the other thing we're not going to allow is client-facing businesses. Again, it breaks that security. So if we had a client-facing business where customers are coming to the facility, coming through the gate, then we've got a traffic flow. What we really, we understand people will use these for business, and we've seen this at other locations. They're going to have off-site meetings, they're going to have, you know, a board meeting, they're going to have a conference room, they're going to bring people in, they're going to use their space, they're going to show off their cars, they're going to show their space, they're going to show the community that they're proud of. And they'll also use it for a business intent, but it won't be a client-facing business. So that in general is the use of the facility and how it's intended to be used. We take this approach in other markets, and it's been successful.
Good, this sounds very interesting. Do we have any members of the public who are here to ask questions about this rezoning? Seeing no one, do we have members of the council who have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you very much for describing what this is and what this isn't. I did have to go and look out and see something a little new for me. I was interested, though, and I see that the neighborhood and just about every other group did approve this. I was interested, though, in traffic and how people get in and out. It's gated, will be a gated entrance?
It will be a gated entrance, and so it's all, it'll all be access controlled for the individual condo owners. So, yeah, all of the traffic will be managed. The intent is really, again, you're going to have a mix of these users. So the traffic itself, you'll have people that'll come there on the weekends, you'll have people that'll be coming there for the Barber events that'll be coming in. And then you'll also have the drivers that are using the facility to store their cars. Generally, it is not a heavy traffic area, it is all access controlled, it is gated. Again, we recognize that the investors in these car condos have large investments in here, and we respect that, and we want to protect it for them.
Okay, and you planted phases in, how many were you going to start out with to begin with?
We'll start with fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
So there'll be two phases.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Clark. Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Did you purchase the land from US Steel? Are you the owner of this, or are you part-owner or part of a?
I will say this is a requirement for the purchase, it will soon be.
Okay, so the purchase is subject to
Yes.
being able to get the zoning. Okay. And so your company is, who is your company?
Our company name is Nyer Properties.
I'm sorry?
Nyer Properties, N-E-Y-E-R.
Nyer.
Nyer. And so I'll just, we built relationships in the markets, we have relationships in the market, and we became aware of the opportunity. We have these in other markets outside of our home market. So it's an opportunity we pursue when we have the right relationships in a market and we invest.
Okay, well, it's really an interesting concept. I think it'll work well in this area. I see Don and Doug, and I have flashbacks from twenty-something years ago, but anyway. It's an interesting concept, good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President?
Yeah, so just thank you for bringing a new amenity to what is a, you know, internationally recognized, world-class, you know, facility in Barber Motorsports Park and the museum. And, you know, this will, I feel like, definitely enhance the user experience. You know, I don't know if a lot of people outside of the motorsports community are aware of this, but there's a lot more that happens at Barber Motorsports Park than Indy or, you know, the vintage events. And, you know, there's pretty much every weekend, the track is rented out for track days, and of course, there's the Porsche school there. So the track is, you know, a very active facility, and I can see, you know, this really, you know, working well alongside the track's activities and really making it convenient for car owners to have their cars and other, you know, equipment located closer to the facility and, you know, negating the need for specialized transport and that's so on and so forth. So I think it's going to really work well, and it's exciting for us, too, because the city of Birmingham invested quite a bit in opening up this piece of property and, you know, getting it ready for development. And to the best of my knowledge, this will be the first development on the site. So it's an exciting project.
Yeah, it'll give it some class. I did want to ask, the types of vehicles that people can store here, are they all race cars and motorcycles? Or is this for any collector who has a car that needs to be sheltered and buffed up?
There will not be a limitation on the car itself. They can store any type of vehicle they would like in this space. From a collector perspective, yes.
Well, you probably won't want my Model A, but maybe if I had a Rolls Royce.
It is more than welcome.
So I think we're ready to vote.
All right, Ms. Clark.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Ms. Clark, please.
Item two, in order to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand twenty-four dash four, to change zone district boundaries from QB one Qualified Neighborhood Business District to QB one Qualified Neighborhood Business District in order to remove and add Q conditions from a previously approved rezoning case. Case ZAC two thousand seven dash seven, for the property located at twenty-one oh one Greensprings Highway and situated in section eleven, quarter section three, township eighteen, range three west, and hearing of all interested parties. Motion, please.
That was Abbott and Smith. All right, Counselor Abbott, this is also planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing. Will the applicant's representative please come forward and just tell us what changes are being? Oh, 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 I've gotten backwards, I've gotten backwards, I'm sorry. Ms. Burrell has to tell us, and then Mr. Boss Danny can further elaborate.
My name is Kim Spurrell. I serve as the City Zoning Administrator, and thank you, Counselor. This one's a little confusing, so I will try to explain it and unconfuse the confusion. So this is ZAC two thousand twenty-four dash four. The property is located at twenty-one oh one Greensprings Highway in the Glen Iris neighborhood. There was a rezoning case in two thousand seven in which the property owner rezoned in order to build a small, I wouldn't necessarily call it a strip mall, it's a multi-tenant building. And the Q conditions from that two thousand seven case included a restriction that a restaurant was not a permitted use. So since that time, the owner would like to lease one of the tenant spaces to a food truck operator. So they're not necessarily going to use the space for a restaurant, but it will be used for all of their restaurant supplies. And so zoning, we don't have a specific use just for restaurant storage. So because it's a food truck, we classify those as a restaurant use. So that Q condition would not allow that to be rented for that particular use. So the owner applied for a rezoning case to remove that Q condition from the two thousand seven case. So while she was going through the process, we also found out that one of the Q conditions required an evergreen buffer along the edge of her property. And she complied with that condition, and she planted evergreens, and they did not survive at that location. So she has continued to replant, and right now, she has roses along there for that buffer, and they are surviving in our climate, and they are doing very well. And so that Q condition was recommended by the Neighborhood Association to also be removed. So we would remove the Q condition that does not allow a restaurant, we would remove the Q condition that requires the evergreen buffer, and then the neighborhood recommended adding a Q condition to limit the hours of operation for the food truck space that they should end no later than eight PM. So we will be removing two Q conditions and adding one Q condition. And the Glen Iris neighborhood met on June third, and they did make a recommendation to remove the two and then add the third, and the vote was twenty-three to zero. The zoning advisory committee on June eighteenth also voted to rec. Um, the zoning advisory committee on June eighteenth also voted to recommend removing the two Q conditions and adding the time limitation. And on June twenty-sixth, the Planning and Zoning Committee also recommended, um, the same. So just for clarification, the rezon- the zoning of the property now is QB one and so the zoning will remain QB one. The only thing changing will be removing the evergreen buffer requirement and removing the restaurant use as not allowed and then adding the hours of operation limitation. So I hope that cleared up any confusion, um, that you guys have. If not, I can answer any questions. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Spurrell. Now we can hear from the applicant's representative.
Counselor President, Counselor Members, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Gary Bostany. Um, I live at seventeen oh three Richard Arrington Boulevard South. Most of you know me as associated with the Five Points South neighborhood. I'm past president, currently serve as the Executive Committee and also a board member of the Five Points Alliance, which we recently, with your help, enacted, uh, caps, uh, into Five Points. And I have a report that so far it's been very acceptable and, uh, it's made a noticeable difference. But today I am here on behalf of my sister Judy Zaden, who owns property on Greensprings Highway. Unfortunately, she was unable to come this morning because of previous commitments. So she asked me if I would come and speak on her request to, uh, revise the zoning and Q condition on the property. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions or elaborate on anything else that might not, might be needed.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the council have questions or comments? Well, seeing no one, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public here who would like to speak regarding this item? Seeing no one, I believe we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright.
Thank you very much.
That item is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Should be item sixty-seven. Resolution determining that the building or structure located at four twenty of Porto Madrid Boulevard South, also known as thirty-seven six thirty-two seventy-seven Street South Birmingham, to be unsafe in public news is directed that it be demolished. Motion, please.
Move the item. Alright, Counselor Moore, you asked for this to be removed?
Yes, uh, and just for clarity, would the, uh, individual, uh, be able to speak to this item?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, just wanted to give him the opportunity to to speak. Uh, I'm sorry. I move to suspend the rules.
Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, go ahead.
Please state your name.
Hello, Councilmember. My name is Nathan Thompson, speaking, uh, for four twenty of Porto Madrid. Um, this property, it was one that we inherited from, uh, a father in his estate. Uh, his estate is currently in a, uh, litigation situation, so we can't do anything about this property. Uh, we have secured the property. Uh, it was evidently, it had a fire. Uh, we didn't even know about the fire, uh, because Birmingham Fire did not let us know that that it had a fire. We've got properties all over Birmingham. We left us with quite a few, uh, quite a few units. Um, we got a letter from the, um, condemnation department and they actually went out and, um, when they took their pictures, I feel like the code environment is our opinion that the code enforcement officer violated our federal rights under, uh, U.S. forty-two, section nineteen eighty-three. And I do have an administrative complaint that I filed with the city of Birmingham on that, uh, both with the legal department and the condemnation department. And I ask that this entire process on this property be just removed until that, at least until that administrative complaint is investigated, until it is gone in. Uh, I do believe that the, uh, enforcement offer officer violated his qualified immunity. And, you know, I ju- I just think that he violated our federal rights during the inspection. And so I'd like this whole, whole process removed.
Got you. Uh, so one thing that I would ask, uh, if you could provide, do you have proof of, uh, this property being in litigation currently?
Uh, this state's in litigation right now.
Got you. And, um, if you, I'm sorry.
We just asked that OCA be allowed to investigate this matter.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselor Woods.
I move for a two-week delay to allow OCA to look into this. Mr. President, can I amend that for four weeks?
Okay, so motion has been made and seconded for a four-week delay.
Who's seconding, I'm sorry?
Counselor Smithman.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, that item.
Thank you, Counsel.
Alright, thank you. So that item has been delayed by four weeks. Uh, next item, I believe is item seventy-four.
Yep. Item seventy-four. A resolution setting a public hearing September the tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider adoption of a resolution sent to the vacation of sixty-two thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet of rightway, located at ten twenty-one and ten fifty-one Sydney Drive, Birmingham, so that the owner can consolidate the property on behalf of the United States Steel Corporation and Jefferson County, Alabama, owners, case number S U B two thousand twenty-four dash fifty-five. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Any discussion? I believe we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, Ms. Clark, um, I believe that we've, I'm not sure that the item under new, old and new business needs to be read, but if if. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I would like us to read item number seventy-five and the item under old and new business at the same time.
Item seventy-five, a resolution relative to the application of Southside Tours LLC for allowed retail liquor class one license to be used at Dave's Pub, eleven twenty-eight twentieth Street South, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh five, hearing of ownership parties. Motion, please.
I move approval.
Second.
Seventy-five has been moved to second and now if you could read the item under old and new business.
Okay. Um, and executive session pursuant to the Alabama Open Meetings Act, Alabama Code nineteen seventy-five, section thirty-six dash twenty-five eight dash seven, uh, free to discuss with the city attorney, legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation.
So it is my recommendation under thirty-six twenty-five A, seven A three, to go into executive session to discuss potential impending litigation.
Alright, so.
Can we table seventy-four?
So seventy-four was approved or you asking, suggesting that we need to table?
We didn't do anything. We just put them, we just read it and put a motion to second.
So, yes, seventy-five. So, um, Attorney King, do we also need to go into executive session for item seventy-five?
Yes, for Dave's Pub and the separate matter. So we can all take it at one time, but that's why I said for potential and pending litigation.
Okay, got it. So, um, at this time, I'll move for executive session. Second.
Uh, Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Counselor Member Smithman. Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Williams. I'm sorry, Counselor Member Woods. President Protem Alexander. Counsel President O'Quinn.
Alright, so we'll go into the executive session and we'll reconvene at the call of the chair.
Yeah.
Turn to turn, took the case personally, took it as damn.
Oh, yeah.
It made you, it made you.
Other than, that nature, they, they didn't have to go trap. Hey, how you doing? Yeah, sorry with this, so it's chicken on, you know, the damn thing. I was running, could I come back? I'm down, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down, I said, he's first, so I can't go. Hey, it's good.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, YouTube people, I mean, that yesterday, she was scared, and we were, yeah.
So. Yeah, calm, yeah. So, okay, so I want to keep it, it's, it's. Okay, alright, alright.
I did some stuff, I remember, but what do you?
Me, the, the, uh, the pandemic, and now kind of, kind of something, you're gonna keep it in your life, too. That'll be as far as to continue. Okay, alright. Yeah. Okay, alright, so that'd be, that'd be, he said, Thursday, that'd be Thursday. Uh, Thursday. Yeah. Okay. Okay, I would.
Calling Kevin Mohammed for work.
Well, that's all, yeah, I talked to Ruby, so we are back with a snap, and you guys are. Okay.
Alright, Mr. Ms. Clark, we're ready to reconvene the meeting, can you please call the roll?
Member Abbott. Councilmember Abbott, roll call. Councilmember Clark. Present. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Woods. Council President, Portim, Alexander. Council President, O'Quinn.
Present. Um, so before us, we have, um, item seventy-five, um, Ms. Clark, do we, we had a motion and a second on that item, right? Um, is there any additional discussion of that item? Councilmore.
I know, Mr. President, I, um, I got the clarity that I needed in executive session, so thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay, item seventy-five is approved.
I got one nay, that one nay?
Nay.
One, one nay, okay, item seventy-five is approved, okay, um. Now we're ready for presentations, Council Clark, are you ready?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, so in District Eight, we've got, uh, a neighborhood meeting this week. The Bellevue Heights neighborhood will meet today at six thirty P M. at Brown Elementary School. Uh, also, the City Council Arts and Culture Committee will meet next week on Monday, the nineteenth, at three P M. In the City Council chambers to consider the proposed ward slate for the Birmingham Museum of Art. Be sure to join the Birmingham Police Department for a meet and greet with Captain David Rocket on August nineteenth from five thirty to seven P M. at West Precinct in Five Points West. Don't miss this chance to connect with Captain Rocket and learn more about the work being done in the western area. Our ARPA-funded Habitat build is coming along nicely in rising West Princeton neighborhood. If you're interested in applying for one of the new homes, please hit, visit habitatbirmingham.org. Right now, there's still time to, um, acquire one of these homes through the Habitat program. If they are not, um, spoken for, uh, in time through their normal process, they will go on the market, uh, and, and can be acquired through, you know, normal channels. Also, if you're looking for a way to get active and meet your neighbors, you can join us every Thursday morning, weather permitting, for a walk. We usually meet at Starbucks on, um, at the Crossplex for a leisurely stroll around. And, uh, we're sometimes, when it's really, really hot, going down to the High Orline in Midfield so that we can walk through the tree canopy instead. But, um, for now, we're at the Crossplex, so come and join us, thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Alright, thank you, Council Clark, Councilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, wanted to just send a reminder to everybody that, uh, the Omega Psi Phi fraternity will be hosting their Community Health Fair at Legion Field from twelve P M. to three P M. Um, on the seventeenth, um, so wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Kilo Springs will be having their Neighborhood Association meeting tonight, um, at Smith Middle School, we also have, uh, Northeast Lake that will also be having their, um, Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at Southern Museum of Flight, as well as Penfield Park tonight. Uh, who will be having theirs at Brownsville Heights Community Center, and all of those will be at six P M. Uh, the Community Development Committee Committee will meet in council chambers on August the twentieth at two P M. Want to say thank you to both of my colleagues for leading that meeting for me, uh, the last time, I greatly appreciate you. Um, and then lastly, but not least, uh, in four days, I will be celebrating my eleventh anniversary, so I want to say a big shout out to my wife, my boo, my, my boo thing out there, Alicia, uh, yeah, congratulations to us, you gotta take us a trip and get away from these kids, uh, so that is all. That concludes my announcements, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Council Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm happy that we have a moment of levity here. And congratulations on making eleven years, that's good. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, August fourteenth, at three thirty P M. Here in the council chambers. Want to thank everyone for their prayers and support in my mother's homegoing last week. It was very nice, and I've been deeply appreciative of my friends on the council. A special thanks goes out to the City Council Committee Assistance and Central Staff for their special support in the repast. Meetings tonight, we have East Avondale Neighborhood at six o'clock via conference call, and the Highland Park Neighborhood meeting is at the exact same time at the Highland Park Golf Course Meeting Room. If you have any concerns or issues about things that you see going on in the city that are not to your satisfaction, please call three one one, or use the wonderful MyBeHim three one one app where you can add photos so that no one can say they can't find the problem. So, um, we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for, uh, updates and announcements that we don't have time to announce here in our three minutes of speaking time. So, thank you very much, and those are my remarks.
Alright, thank you, Council Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, as far as neighborhood meetings, we have South Tisfield Neighborhood will meet today at five thirty P M. at Holy Family Crystal Race School, and then the Arlington Weston Neighborhood will meet today at six P M. at the Weston Library. Um, thank you to everyone who came out to our August D six Farmers Market and to this field, um, day this past Saturday. It was, um, a really, really good event, and then, um, I really enjoyed going to the New Pure Grum Baptist Church Family and Friends Day as well that same day. Um, River Park will be offering their Senior Fit Class on Tuesdays and Fridays at A A M. They also have a variety of other classes, Monday is boxing, uh, cardio, Tuesday's hip hop cardio, Wednesday is zumba, Thursday is yoga, and Friday is line dancing. Then the J C F R C and Be Kind Birmingham, along with volunteers from the Cumberland School Law, will host a Community Input Day on Thursday, August fifteenth, from one to four, at the Weston Library. If you come fill out a survey, you will receive five, uh, fi- five dollar gift card, uh, free lunch, free clothing, raffle prizes, and more. And then, of course, for more information on all exciting events happening in District Six, visit our website at W W W dot D six B H A M dot com, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Portim Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President, these are announcements for District Seven. I want to start by thanking the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association and the Roosevelt Southwest Community Development Corporation for a wonderful annual back-to-school community resource fair. I was very excited, all sorts of resources that families had an opportunity to, uh, partake of and get information about. So I'd like to, um, just congratulate Neighborhood President, Mr. George Creer, Pat Woods, and Stephanie McCurdy for all their hard work to make that event a success, so we look forward to the, this was their first one, so we look forward to their annual one next year. Uh, these are the, uh, meetings that we have scheduled in District Seven this week. This evening, the East Brownsville Neighborhood Association will meet via conference call at five thirty. The Riley Travalick Neighborhood Association will meet at six P M. at Noble Chapel A M E. We also have bulk trash and brush pickup that was scheduled today at Germania Park North. On Thursday, the Hillman and the Hillman Park Neighborhood Association will meet at five P M. They meet jointly at, um, Hillman Station at Hopewell Baptist Church down on Jefferson Avenue. I'd like to invite everyone out to join me in partnership with Brenda's Brown Buddhism Buddies. We'll be having our District Community Health Forum, that'll be Thursday, August fifteenth, only one hour, five thirty to six thirty, at Wiggins Park, so come out, it's an hour of knowledge and fun, and so we look forward to the community joining us there for the Community Health Forum. On Friday, August sixteenth, there will be bulk trash and brush pickup, and that's scheduled for the Riley Community. On Saturday, the Tarpley City Neighborhood Association will have their Fun Day, it will be from ten A M. to three P M. And that'll be at the Tarpley City Park. Also, on Saturday, at nine thirty A M., there'll be a prayer walk for all of the students, faculty, staff, and we know the high school, and so the organizers of this event, they just want to come together and just, um, have opportunity to, um, give our students, um, support as they start this school year. On Sunday, we have our first Safe Summer Series concert, it's free, it's free, it's free. And, um, it'll be starting at Botanical Gardens, and that'll be at five thirty P M. to seven thirty. We have Rahim Devon will be singing along with other, uh, local acts, and so again, this starts Safe Summer Series of concerts that we're having throughout the city. Just as a reminder, this was started during COVID nineteen, this was an opportunity for us to get families outside, and so now that we've made it through that, we have this opportunity to continue, and, um, this is our first one, starting again on Sunday, August eighteenth, at, uh, the Botanical Gardens. And then on Monday, I'll end it out, we have bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for Green Acres, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Council Woods.
Yes, sir, a couple announcements, again, the Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association meets tonight at six P M. at Smith Middle School. Our Be Litter Free Community Cleanups continue this Saturday at eight A M., be meeting at the shopping center, uh, right there near Springville Road at the intersection of Edwards Lake Road, that's eleven fifty-three Huffman Road, and continue that work, we want to thank all the volunteers who, uh, have come out and supported that effort. Um, and that, that'll be it, so everybody continue to go be great, thank you.
Thank you. For District Five, the East Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. via conference call. Please call my office at two five four two six seven nine for additional information, if you would like to call in and join that call. North Avondale Neighbour- Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, August fif- fifteenth, at six P. M. at the MLK Recreation Center in North Avondale. The South Side Neighborhood Association will meet also on Thursday at six P. M. at the Birmingham Police Department, South Precinct. Um, uh, please note that there are regularly scheduled Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting on August twenty-sixth. Um, will be canceled, and in place of that, we'll have our, uh, intersection session, our convening of transportation stakeholders. Um, our topic will be ADA and, uh, walkability. Um, also want to remind folks, uh, that Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival is coming up. That is Saturday, August twenty-fourth, two P. M. to ten P. M. Um, make sure that you, you got your, uh, bag chair and your cooler ready. Um, it's always a good time. You can check out the lineup at www.forthavenuejazz.org. Um, as always, Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival coincides with the Sidewalk Film Festival. So, um, Sidewalk Film Festival starts, uh, that week on August nineteenth and runs through the twenty-fifth. And if you want to check out all the vending venues and, um, various, uh, film blocks, that information can be fa- found at wwwsidewalkfest.com. Um, just want to remind the council that we do have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled next Wednesday, August twenty-first. Um, we're putting together the agenda for that meeting. Um, if planning staff are, are ready, uh, I think we'll have an update on the, um, proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals and also, um, proposed ordinance, uh, amendments for signage, uh, that Planning and Zoning Committee will be discussing tomorrow. Um, and that concludes my announcements. So, Ms. Clark, at this time, we're ready for our public speakers. Uh, Council Clark.
Thank you. Um, I missed this, and I, I thought Ms., uh, Councilor Tate might announce it, but please note that the Pratt City, uh, Sixth Neighborhood Fun Day will be Saturday, August nineteenth. That's going to take place from four to seven at the Howes Sanford Rec Center. So come and enjoy the afternoon with your neighbors. Thanks.
Okay. All right, now we're ready for the public speakers.
Nathan Thompson. Nathan Thompson.
We handled that earlier.
I think so. Um, William Harden also was earlier than question about the speaking. Marcus Cummings.
Good afternoon. Please remember to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to be displayed on the monitor.
My name is Marcus Cummings. I live at nineteen-thirty-three Sixteenth Avenue South in, uh, Councilman Abbott's District. Own a business, Owls on Seventh in Council, uh, President O'Quinn's District. Uh, I'm here today to speak on a couple of items. Uh, by the way, the last time I was here, uh, it's amazing how getting things in front of the nine of you makes things happen. Um, the lights on Seventh Avenue between twenty-seventh and twenty-fifth under the viaduct, there are eight lights. They've been out, excuse me, four of them were out since April on one side of the street, on the south side of, of Seventh Avenue. Now we're down to two of the eight on. Been in contact with someone at City Hall. They've contacted someone at Alabama Power. It's come back to the city. It's not the, it's not the Alabama Power's responsibility. It's, it's just been a, a lot, what I consider to be just a lot of red tape. Um, it is a safety issue. We have a lot of homeless problem under those eight bridges. Thankfully, over the past month, that has been cleared out some. Been cleared out for a day or two, and they're right back under there, making a mess, and there are a lot of break-in, car break-ins, um, under those bridges, most of which are not reported because people feel like their voices are not heard when they do report, or that it's not going to do any good. So you add, add the homeless, you add the, the lights out. We have problems, and we need, we need, I need for my business to be, um, successful. I need to provide a safe space that includes a safe place to park. Um, we need more police presence in our entertainment districts. Um, over the July Fourth holiday, got people driving by, and this was all over the city, dropping huge fireworks all over the city. That's a problem. We called, I know other businesses called. Um, last weekend, had, had some people doing donuts in the middle of Seventh and Twenty-seventh. Almost hit two of my employees and almost hit a car. This past weekend, Five Point South and then, uh, Magnolia and Twenty-first, the exact same thing. We need police presence in our entertainment district. Um, and last, um, predatory toting companies. We've had problems with them in the past. They act like they don't have to stop at a red light at night. I have noticed two different occasions on two different weekends where they just fly through red lights, and, and have come very close to having traffic accidents, and I hope someone will take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Um, William Mohammed. William Mohammed, four-eleven Lorain Street. I wanted to come up and to ask the council, make the council aware that the Committee to Save Jefferson County invited President O'Quinn out to one-hour meetings, and he gave us a lot of information about the condition of, I guess, uh, the Police Department and certain ideas he had. That led to us, uh, being called by the FOP. And the FOP came out, and we become, joined together, and we formed a subcommittee on prevention of violence that FOP members and, and leadership are working with us on. So this Saturday at the Enfley Rec Center, we're having a discussion on the prevention of violence, and we would like to invite any of you or anybody else you know that would like to come out and talk about these things. So I never thought that I would be working with FOP, but I am actively working to help them to recruit and retain. Because, and I tried, the first person to try to get them to recruit was me, because I just found out that an eighteen-year-old with a GED get a starting salary with the Police Department of fifty thousand dollars. My daughter sent my son, allowed my son to go to the Navy. She begged me, Daddy, please don't talk him out of it. Hell, he could have been a police officer and been at home. So I'm helping them to try to recruit, and we want to look at what can we do to solve some of the violence issues in our community. We have to take responsibility for that. We want to work with everybody. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Council Woods, I believe. Did, did you want, want to offer a comment?
Uh, now I forgot to make an announcement. I wanted to make sure we, uh, for the record, notify the public that the library board is currently seeking appointments. Um, and if you're interested in serving on the library board, please email your resume and interest to, uh, Clinton, C.L.I.N.T.O.N.Woods@BirminghamAL.GO.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Ms. Clark, I believe you have one more speaker. Okay, all right. That's, uh, yes, so want to recognize our officers on duty. Um, as always, we have Cedric Pinker, who's based here in City Hall, and we also have today with us Officer Coleman and Officer S- Sampson from North Precinct. Thank you for being with us today. Um, councilors, that brings us to the end of our meeting.
Moving to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned, thank you.